Let's go ahead and call me in order. This is April 18, 2013. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the occasion.
I am made to be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, it is indeed an honor to come before you tonight. We ask that you bless each one that are here and those that are watching via internet. We ask that we be able to do the business of the city. We ask that you be with the families who lost loved ones and people hurt and their families this week. And the Boston mayor, he asks that you be with us each and every day. Just help and guide and direct us. All these things we pray in your name.
Gloria and White. We have a proclamation here to present for National Library Week. And I'll just read this to the down to the end to you. Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities campuses and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the challenging needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls. And whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. And whereas librarians are trained, tech savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks. And whereas librarians offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing classes, 24/7 homework help and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans to older adults planning their retirement. And whereas librarians continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore being resolved at IG and Higgin, Mayor of Canton, to plan National Library Week April 15 through the 19th, 2013. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Communities matter at your library. I certainly want to welcome all of our visitors here tonight. And we will begin with the agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda. Well, I'm sorry. We need to go ahead and approve the minutes from the last meeting first, which is part of the agenda, I guess. But the council meeting minutes of March 21st and April 4th are attached to your consideration. Are there any changes, corrections to those minutes? Any motion approved? Sir, have a motion and a second to approve any other discussion. If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Kaufman were not here on April 4th. If I can be overstepping the vote that night.
Okay. All right. Now consideration to approve the tonight's agenda. We have motion to approve the agenda. Have a second? Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. There are 10 minute public dinner period. Linda Holmes Rubin, if you'd like to come up. Thank you.
I think some of you made your memory. I was actually back about the same issue. I understand that the legal fees that you owe myself and my neighbors for eminent domain may have been discussed in council by local clubs. And I'm just coming up to try and find out whether it's been discussed and where it stands. It's been well over a year. You legally owe us reimbursement of our legal fees for this eminent domain case. And I'd like to know when we're going to see our reimbursement.
Are you still in contact with your attorney now?
My attorney's not contacting me. And so far as I know, no one is contacting me.
I sent him an order before we got to the last meeting. I sent him something that takes care of it all a couple of weeks ago.
When you say takes care of it all, what does that mean?
Well, I had to have a court order because the money has to be released from the clerk's office.
How long will that process take?
Well, wait until you hear back from your attorney.
I will contact him. But again, I appreciate the fact that there finally seems to be at least an attempt at. So again, I thank you for at least making this effort. It's been an extremely long time that you've been waiting. And I just hope that it gets taken care of soon and you won't have to look at me then.
Thank you. Lance and Debbie, is it Alec?
Honestly, I wasn't prepared to say anything. But we're on the agenda to have the conditional use approval for light industrial property for the start of church in Canton, Georgia. And at this time, if you have questions, I'll be more on the hand to answer anything you have.
Is it with the location?
It's more of two clearly white.
Is that going to be industrial?
Yes, sir. It's live industrial. The planning zoning is already approved. It's just a matter of your way.
I believe that was conditioned that it would be specifically for your organization, right?
That's correct.
Be with it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Under old business, we have the action on selection of new committee member for the urban redevelopment agency. On that, I would like to nominate Clay Cowie to fill that position. I understand for Mr. Ferris Ford that he is willing to accept that.
Do you know?
I know. Give a second. All right. We have any others? All right. If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. Okay. All members voting for the motion. Okay. The next item be under old business, action on planning commission recommendation on case number CUP 1302-001, 403 Kimberly Way, request to operate church of light industrial zoning. Do we need anyone?
We discussed it at the last.
We did discuss it at the last meeting. You have questions or any?
I just want you to approve.
We have motion to approve?
Sir.
We have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Item 8BHC, action on planning commission recommendation for case number ZCA 1302-001, 2000 Town Mill Avenue, request to increase approval for commercial area. We also talked about this one, I think, last last meeting briefing.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Item D, discussion and possible action on resolution to determine the city council's position on discussing consolidating fire services of Cherokee County. Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I had planned for a resolution from city to determine the city council position discussing consolidation of fire service in Cherokee County. Being that where the body is not totally here, Mr. Cummings is here. And I feel that it would be inappropriate for me to go ahead and try to make this motion this evening. I would like to postpone this until next council meeting so Mr. Cummings would be available. Because I know he's been a major advocate for the consolidation. And I think it's only fair that you have him give his input on that important issue. But that aside, I would like to make some statements about, I think, that we did receive a written communicate from the county, which is same as basically what we had last year. And going through it, I didn't see any major changes. There was a lot of acquisitions from individuals that we never did do anything last year. We most certainly did. We looked at this, we turned it down, it came back. Now it's basically the same type program. We have we have better service level. And we are continued to be plagued with misinformation. So I just wanted to make sure that we get this back on the agenda for next work session. I would like to keep it open for dialogue with anybody else who'd like to discuss this consolidation agreement.
Anyone else have comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Considering we have a new committee to study further the consolidation. And it's my understanding that we yet to have a meeting of that committee. But we have received, I guess, a initial proposal from the county as to how they can see the emergency take place. And I have made a few statements here. I'd like to read them to you that as long as we are starting to maybe look at negotiating, I want to bring up some points that need to be negotiated. So if you give me just a minute, it's only one page, so I won't take long. The proposal only addresses two stations where the city wants to work towards a rating of ISO 3. As we know, the city wants three stations. The county proposal only addresses the issue of the three will make Canton more attractive for commercial and economic development. This is a vision that every one of us, including the mayor, is talking about growing our economy here. Four is a good rating for residential. What really makes a big difference being that I was in the insurance industry. Three is for commercial. Commercial businesses will see, including present commercial accounts, will see a tremendous help with a rating of three. I think that could be seen with our sister city down south of us in Woodstock there rating three. And you see where the growth is. It's just a good example. The bluff station is not mentioned and is most important for our city's future. That's a big concern. The businesses that will be opening up there or hopefully opening up there. And even our county commissioner wants economic development in here. So three is what we want in this city. The city of Canton operates its present two stations. The operation budget is 1.9 million. We don't see why the county cannot operate at the same cost. The county proposal suggests that we pay 2.4 million, I mean, they call it 2,470,000 dollars due on May 1st of the year that we should merge. This represents an additional, understand additional, 500,470 additional dollars to operate under the same two stations via the county. The county should use the 1.9 figure for cost unless they just have too much overhead. Some areas that I would like to see in negotiating, if we decide to do so, the county must protect our city employees that would be merged over for two years in a way of job guarantees. I don't want to see our good employees that worked years and years, all of a sudden will be gone. The county must ensure that the city employees are fully vested. I don't like the word possible in a contract because possible means just that. It must be fully vested in the county's defined benefit retirement plan and medical plans. The fire impact fee that the city will collect in coming years with the development of Northside Hospital Parkway, the bluff, and future residential could raise to the area of $50,000 per year. The state still has fire trucks leases which must continue. Therefore, we must add some cost into the county's proposal and ask the city to walk away from. They, in their proposal, say that all these fees go to them now. The county's proposal still has not addressed the exemption costs. The city, if the city grandfather's the senior exemption, we still must pay the 3.394 mill with another increase in the wind, meaning that the city will give the seniors their exemption. But we still, as a city, must pay the county that rate for each property, which means it's going to come from fees and taxes. So we're paying anyhow. It's a shell game. We all know what a shell game is. The city still must find the funds to pay the county based on tax taxes. It will only come from taxes and fees. We're still paying. Plus, the county has asked for our assets reviewed to be 4.448 million dollars plus $500,000 they've asked of Splot 6 requested. Add three years of fire impact fees at $50,000 a year equals 150,000. Total cost that the city will walk away from is 5 million and 98,000 dollars. I must add, in that contract, it says that the county can cancel the city with two-year notice. But it doesn't say it's going to give the heck off our assets if they cancel. Does this sound like smart business? To me, if we are to get in a room and start negotiating, some of these issues need to be addressed. And the reason I wanted to make them public tonight is so that when Mr. Cummings come back and the committee does get together, that maybe the county can address some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I think I, did I see Buzz Aaron's out there? Yes, sir. I'd like to welcome you to our meeting, Mr. Chairman. Happy to have you here. I had not planned to say anything, but I did send an email today to some constituents that had expressed their support of consolidation. And John Beresford printed it off and brought it here and asked me to read it. So I will, you'll bear with me. There's, but I do want to preface it by saying that the county has a very good fire service. They've received awards. It's an excellent county fire service. They've just got a tremendous amount of ground to cover geographically. Canton has a very tight, densely packed amount of ground to cover. It's two different animals we're talking about. If the county would bring us a proposal that's even close to being fair and balanced, then I would be willing to consider it. But I think anybody that saw the proposal we were presented by Mr. Cooper would agree that it's totally one-sided and a very bad deal for us. Just a few of the highlights I just mentioned here to our constituents. The current debate boils down to the age-old question of cost versus quality. Last week, Jared Cooper made the statement that, quote, "This will save Canton taxpayers millions." And folks, that's a true statement. That is a true statement. The proposal will save the Canton taxpayers millions. It would also be a true statement to say that if the county sold the fine new office building and moved into a bunch of trailers, that would save the county taxpayers millions. Both statements carry the same amount of ridiculousness and superficial, short-term thinking. So the answer is somewhere in between cost versus value received. The proposal states that the goal will be an average response time of under eight minutes. Canton consistently has a response time of less than five minutes and many times and oftentimes is closer to four minutes. That's a lot when your house is on fire and your family's trapped inside. The statement that the county will somehow just pay for the new stations and Canton gets them free is just not, not true. And nobody in the county has seriously said that. The proposal clearly states that Splot funds, Canton's Splot funds will pay for the new Laurel Canyon Fire Station. There's no guarantee that the downtown station will remain open. There's no mention of the bluff station whatsoever, which is a major economic
There's no mention of the Bluff Station whatsoever, which is a major economic development tool that we, we need here in the city. Part of the proposal includes Canton giving away 4 million dollars worth of fire equipment. Mr. Huffman says it's over five millions of dollars of fire equipment, and it includes a two-year cancellation clause. Just read it. Either party can cancel the deal. If the county decides they don't like covering us, we're too much bother after four, five years, 10 years, all of us are gone, they just cancel it. We have no firefighting equipment, no way to protect our people, except for two years to come up with and figure it out. They want us to hand over every dime of the taxpayer-paid-for assets. They, we, it's clearly stated that the ISO rating of Canton's, which is now four, could be reduced to the county's, which is five, nine. An excellent rating for a county as big as Cherokee, but again, it's a different animal than a tightly-packed city. We need a four, and we really need a three for, to make ourselves attractive to the good businesses. The hot potato of the senior exemption would remain Canton's problem, even though the city would be completely out of the fire business. It states in the proposal, the county will simply bill the city once a year for 3.394 mils of our total tax digest, and of course, that's the first year. Typically, out of necessity, the county raises taxes more often than they're not annually. The city does not more often than not, very rarely. If the county's going to take over fire completely, they need to just collect the money. Therefore, all seniors would pay the same as everybody else, but there's no sense in Canton being the middleman. If we're out of the fire business, we're out of the fire business. The county can collect from our people, just like they collect from the county people. Yes, folks, we do pay a premium to live in the city, and we receive superior services. Police, parks, streets, sidewalks, festivals, downtown, special events, all the things we do for downtown. The fire hydrants, everything is a premium to live in the city. The fact of life is, the county is capable of doing everything the city can do, but on a much broader scale. There's economies of scale, but we, it's like an upgrade to be able to live in the city of Canton. And if you remember last year, when a few people tried to start a movement to dissolve the city, we, we looked at the numbers long and hard, and when we came to the conclusion that currently it costs about $150 a year premium to live in the city of Canton, per $100,000 of property value. If your home's worth 100 grand, you're paying about $150 a year extra for all the services you receive from the city, once you boil it all down. Yes, there's a lot of people that would be satisfied with a reduction in service, and that's the way life is. That's why the discount stores do so well, selling cheap Chinese junk to people that only care about price. So, it's, it's just a decision that has to be made, price versus value, cost versus value. Meanwhile, we need to proceed with this Laurel Canyon Station. We promised the people 10 years ago that bought homes in Laurel Canyon and Great Sky there is going to be a fire station built there. It's got to be built either way, and it's going to be built with Canton taxpayer money either way. That's according to the county's own documents. So, let's go ahead with that first step. We don't have to eat all this elephant with one bite. Let's proceed, and if the county wants to come to us with something serious we can actually discuss, then we will. There's, you can never say never and never slam the door, but in the meantime, let's, let's move forward and build this Laurel Canyon Station.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to say that this is some of the most open comments that we've had from the council, I think, in public meetings since this whole process began, and I'm very appreciative of that. I do believe that the county has, has provided a framework, in their summary particularly, around which we could build a firm agreement for consolidation by the, for consideration by the council. Just that, consideration. But I'd like to ask Mr. Wood a number of questions as our city manager here, as it relates to the generalities or general framework of this agreement. First, I'd like to say, in your professional opinion, does this proposal provide for the county to build two new fire stations in the city and have them open in 2014 and 2015, respectively?
I don't recall the dates, the two stations. I was thinking that Laurel Canyon's schedule was 2015, maybe you all were out there, was it 14, I don't count that one?
So, the answer's yes, I guess. Does this provide for two ambulances to be stationed in the city? One in the Laurel Canyon, Great Sky area, and a second near the new Northside Hospital near Highway 140 and former Commerce Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. Is it your understanding that the county currently has the discretion to place ambulances at any location they choose and are not mandated to station in ambulances at Laurel Canyon, or for that matter, anywhere in the city?
That would be my understanding of that.
Does this proposal, in your opinion, provide a means by which senior slash disability home state exemption, which was approved by the voters in a referendum, may continue?
I think the recommendation from Mr. Johnson was designed to at least partially achieve that purpose.
Okay.
That, in fairness, I think it graduates on out, so ultimately, we would have to contend with that, but initially, his proposal, I think, is designed to, to, to address that.
In your opinion, does this proposal from the county provide the framework whereby all city fire personnel will have employment with the Cherokee County Fire Service at equal or better pay and benefits?
I can't speak to the equal and better pay. We have ensured that all firefighters would be retained, I think, equal, yes, better, I'm not sure about, but equal.
I said equal or better, okay. Yeah, that would have to be, in my opinion, one of the...
Yeah, I think, I think there's some points that we need to take very seriously in that regard. There is a distinction in our respective benefits packages that would need to be taken into account. So, if you took a, you know, a $40,000 a year firefighter and carried him directly over to the county at $40,000, then that might not be an equal situation because of the benefits distinction. But if all that's taken into account, and if the county is assuring the city that our firefighters would not be economically disadvantaged in any way...
Right.
And benefit programs taken into account, yes.
Okay. Does this proposal provide for the continuation of the downtown fire stations for fire services?
I think we have, in my knowledge, we have said that that was going to be essential and that we wanted to retain that real estate. We wanted to retain the deed of that real estate and use at least a portion of that building for general administrative or non-firefighting purposes.
Okay. Does this proposal allow for the city to continue billing the property owners for fire services in exactly the same manner as the city has done historically?
It does, yes.
Okay. Does this proposal provide for a tax credit against at least a portion of the property and equipment to be transferred to the county?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Does this proposal provide for a tax credit against at least a portion, or cost credit to them, at least a portion of the property and equipment to be transferred to the county?
Well, it was big to the net MNO, and then I think Mr. Johnson's suggestion, at least in party conference today, is...
Okay. Does this proposal provide that the fire tax portion of our Splotch be transferred to the county as it is collected over the next six years?
Yeah, but I think there's been some misunderstanding about that amount, because I don't think we have the 504, and I don't think we will have the 504. I think it would be less than someone...
But it would be on like an annual basis as it comes in at around 90-something thousand a year, not all at one time?
The report, the report, the...
Okay. Right. This tax is designated for fire protection, and if the city doesn't have the expense, then do we need the restricted revenue if it were consolidated?
I've been advised by our CFO that it would need to be dedicated for fire service, for fire service program.
Is it true and not a misrepresentation that under the plan recently defeated by the voters, the cost to the average taxpayer in taxes would likely increase a total of between 50 and 60 percent?
I didn't think about that one.
I believe that was, I believe it was 50-something, I believe our CFO had that in newspaper. But anyway, I believe that's approximate numbers from the CFO. Certainly, this could cost homeowners, I guess, hundreds of dollars and commercial businesses thousands, right?
He's nodding, he's nodding his head affirmatively, so I guess...
Okay, okay, good. Would it seem reasonable to you, in your professional opinion as city manager, that if the city consolidated its fire services without of the county, that the current city fire personnel would be utilizing the new county training center for training?
Yes, if they were county employees, certainly, it would be...
Is it, is it also your professional opinion that if the city keeps its fire services in-house, that the city may have to pay the county to utilize the county fire training center, or the city may have to build its own at an additional cost to taxpayers?
If one of those two scenarios had not developed, I think it would be a detriment, could be, I wouldn't say would be, could be a detriment to our ISO rating.
Okay. Last question. Mr. Wood, is it still, in your professional opinion, which you have shared with me on a number of occasions, that from a purely economic viewpoint, cost benefit, no, not political, that consolidation is the best direction for this city?
I have said that if you're looking at nothing other than the economics, then the county's proposal certainly has some attractiveness. I'll say one, was that all you wanted to say?
Yes.
Let me say one other thing, too. In April of 2010, in this room, three years ago this month, I presented a proposal on PowerPoint screen right up there that we proceed, at that time, three years ago, with a GMA lease purchase funding program, to go ahead and then arrange to build Laurel Canyon Station, and that fell on deaf ears. Every budget year that I've been here recommended that we raise the mortgage rate just to achieve property tax neutrality, not to increase property taxes, just to get to a neutral revenue point. We've lost between one and a half and $2 million over the past several years, if my recollection is correct, simply because we have not done that. Last August, I recommended in writing to this Baron Council that we adopt a 1.25 mil increase and dedicate those funds to building that new station at Laurel Canyon. I appreciate the respect of my opinion, but if some of my other opinions and recommendations had been followed, we might not be in this hopeless embroil that we're in right now.
Let me, I always, when you do, when you say that, I always have to come out, I got one comment. We always, in the last few years, have had excess revenues over our expenses. Not once, to my knowledge, was that money, excess money, said, that anyone said, "Let's take that and put it into a fire station," at the time. So, anyway...
We should have.
But we may say that.
That's true.
If the city were to build two new fire stations and operate four stations as proposed by the county, the total cost to the city over a five-year period would be approximately $6 million more than if it were to consolidate with the county and pay at approximately 3.4 plus or minus mils per year. One thing that I don't want as an elected official is to be perceived as telling my constituents what they want. They should be telling me, and they should be telling this council. So, over the next few weeks, I will be holding one or more town hall meetings to discuss county fire services and possible consolidation with the county, and certainly welcome anyone to attend, to ask questions, make comments. We need to be hearing from you more so than you need to hear from us. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So, these town hall meetings, that means you're doing away with the fire committee?
No, sir.
So, in concert with your town hall meetings, you're going to have this group doing their research. Is that what you're saying?
What group?
Mr. Cummings?
The committee? They'd be one of, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I would just have the town hall meetings, and I would expect that some of those committee members might want to be there to hear what people are saying. I think that would be a good idea.
Right. I'd like to point out a couple other issues here.
Sure.
You were talking about, referred to this 2 million, and you said that we've always had the overage. Well, to me, that looks like a lack of vision, lack of vision. You're talking about vision, and you've got this committee for vision. Where was your vision on this fire department? How come you haven't, as the leader of this city, stepped forward and set out these three or four years? We got excess, why don't we do something about it? Can I just say?
Yeah, that's the end of the question.
Okay. I got another one for you.
Sure.
The economic cost benefits. Well, economic cost, yeah, I imagine that the county could come forward with something a little cheaper than what we can do. But what about service level, as referred to earlier? Service level, when your house is burning, I want the best there, and right now, we have the best. The issue on training, it has become a political issue, and it's a shame that the county and the city council has allowed us to get into the brotherhood of the firefighters in the county and the city. It's a shame. They have an excellent working relationship. I hope they keep it, and I hope that the politicians stay out of that brotherhood. Now, this downtown issue, once again, is ambiguous. Who knows what that's going to be? And this, this deal about ambulances, that is a county issue. It's not a city issue. County, by state of Georgia dictates, county will furnish ambulances. So, why are we, we aren't in the ambulance business, so why is that? Throw it out. Why is that always stuck in there? I don't understand. Get out of that business. The seniors, once again, been battered around. We're going to pick up the difference. The taxpayers of this city are going to cover the cost of the seniors, one way or the other. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just point out one little interesting bit about, Gene, your $6 million premium cost to the taxpayers over a five-year period, that's a little higher than what Mr. Cummings told us today. He said 4.4 to 4.9 million. But even if it's 6 million over a five-year period, Scott, aren't there about 8,000 pieces of property in the tax digest?
We've got about 8,200 water customers, and that doesn't, that doesn't equate to pieces of property. I, I think there are more parcels than that, not...
I don't think so.
Is that 10,000?
10,000, yeah.
Okay, 10,000. Well, I did my quick math based on 8,000, but even on 8,000 parcels, that comes out to an average of $150 a year per parcel, or 41 cents a day. Now, for that amount, or you can do it based on our population of 23,000 people, and that's going to come to about 12 or 13 cents a day per resident. You know, that's, obviously, we're not all property owners, but we still pay property taxes in essence due to renting or our various goods and services we purchase. Those are just dividing up, that's the true economics of the situation, is what it'll cost you, somewhere between 10 and 12, and 40 or 50 cents a day average. Now, for that, we get an ISO rating much higher, much better, the lower the number, the better, of four versus the five, somewhere between the five and the nine. We can get a response time that's significantly better, and I understand the county-based fire trucks that would be in the city would respond better than their eight-minute countywide, but there's no guarantee of it. Again, you do lose control of the downtown fire station. The county's going to do what's best for the entire county, and if it's best that they quit dispatching trucks out of the downtown fire station, that's what they're going to do, because they're responsible to the whole county. So, again, I'm not coming down to saying I'm just dead-set against it, but we have to understand the true economics of the situation. We have to decide, even the bigger picture, do we really want to be a city or not? If we don't exist to provide premium services, then why do we even exist at all?
Scott?
Yeah, this is obviously a very emotional thing, and there's a lot of sincere thoughts that their side is right, or their position is right, I don't want to say side, but their position is right. There are a lot of numbers floating around, and I came up with some numbers that came straight from the CFO, and there are numbers floating around that are different, and there are several million dollars difference in these numbers.
are several million dollars difference in these numbers, and to this day, right now. Mr. Mayor, all due respect, I don't have any confidence in the numbers you show there. You might not have any...
You might play your game, Tom.
CFO. And I'm sure you might not have any confidence in where my numbers come from, but it depends on how you massage them. We've all been in meetings that you can massage numbers to tell a story, and done that for many years. So, we truly don't know yet what the true story is. But, to go back to, I think what many of the council people are feeling is that we want to build a city. We want to see this city grow. This is the vision the committee or the commission that you've established. And if we're to do this, it needs to start right now. And one of the first things people see is fire and police. And if we want to do that, Mr. Mayor, and you sat up here and talked to the commission, then we need to start doing it now. It wasn't too long ago, and I'm sure you'll have convenient memory on this, as we discussed out in the parking lot just yesterday, but it was just a while back that we got into the big discussions of whether to renew the wastewater treatment contract with UP Utility Partners. And we paid $300,000 to a gentleman to come in here and get his recommendations. And behind the scene, the mayor supported it, and this comes from Mr. Trump. And that was going to cost this city $2 million more over the next five years. So, you were willing to spend that $2 million, and UP was doing just fine. Now, people don't really see the wastewater plant too often, but it is a pretty significant part of our city. Look at the hospital, I mean, that's a major issue with our new hospital being built, is how we can treat the wastewater. And we're going to do an enlargement of that coming up real soon, and it's going to cost the city somewhere, what do we say, $7, $8 million? Is that the rough estimate?
Seven, I hope.
Seven, we hope. But we got to do it, because we're going to grow. We're going to have a medical center here. And then, when the businesses and people want to come to live in Cherokee County, they want to be close to that medical center. They don't want to go down to Cobb County. They want it right here. So, we're going to spend the money. We've got to start looking a little bit further in advance, or the future. Fire and police is part of it. And if we can get rid of it, the service is going to go down. Let me give you an example. You got a nine, you got a five, and you got a four. You got money that needs to be spent on fire if you are all one under the county. Where do you think you're going to spend it first? On the four or the nine? You're going to spend it on the nine. So, what's going to happen to the four that we have is going to get weaker and weaker, to the point that it's going to be a five. And we want a three, because that is for economic development. Our commissioner is going around soliciting from every city to come up with additional dollars for economic development. Well, if you want economic development, you put it into getting a three, so you'll be attractive to businesses. A three, a four is nothing but a residential rate. Three is a commercial rate. So, we've got to have some vision, and if it costs us a little money, so be it. How much is going to cost us? I think that's still kind of there. I apologize for being so emotional, but I do get passionate about it, and I apologize.
We're all somewhat spirited in this discussion. That's all right. I mean, this is the most discussion on this we've had since the whole thing started, and I think that's good. I do have two other points that I mentioned. The cost of this, I don't think anyone knows, and as Mr. Wood said, you know, when you look at purely economics, it really doesn't compare as far as what it's going to cost the taxpayers in the long run. Okay? It doesn't. And the problem here is that this doesn't even consider, the increase here doesn't consider the needs for increases in the police department, as you mentioned. I mean, that's a totally separate issue. It doesn't consider any needs that we have to increase mileage for the public works department and our streets or recreation. It doesn't consider all that. So, by the time you add all these needs in there and get there, you talk about it's going to be a negative for commercial development, because they like ISO of three, but they don't like taxes that are, you know, two or three times what they are now. I mean, that would be bad. Number two, we keep bringing this thing up about ambulances, that it doesn't matter about ambulances. Well, the reason it matters about ambulances is because during the first quarter of 2013, our fire department responded to 694 calls. And of those 694, 463 were emergency medical calls. Only 39 were fire calls, and one explosion and a number of other assorted calls there. But that's the reason it's important that the city has, that the county commit to placing, you know, stationing an ambulance or two ambulances within the city limits, is because most of their calls are just that, and the response, where they put those. And they're not mandated to put them anywhere. They may be, the state may say, if you're going to have an ambulance service, your county must control it. But the state doesn't say, Cherokee County, you must put one at Laurel Canyon, or you must put one in Holly Springs. They say, you put them where you, you made that decision. They're not mandated. And that's, that's one of the things I think is more important than it may look like on the surface, is that they don't have to put one there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Interesting point. So, we're going to have the county play favorites with the county and put ambulances right in our city, two of them, two locations. Woodstock is going to go, excuse me, we want ambulances in our city. Holly Springs is going to say, we should have ambulances. How long do you think it's going to take the county to figure out they made a mistake and start having to move those ambulances around? There's nothing in writing that that is guaranteed. They cannot have those ambulances sitting in those stations if a call comes in for, well, that's got, that's got to go. So, this ambulance thing is a front for what? It is off the chart. We're talking fire. You bring up an interesting point about the services. Yes, sir. Rescue and EMS calls. That was January 191, February 120, March 152. Those were made, and I didn't hear of one death of our fire department going out and losing anybody. We have excellent firefighters who have qualifications to go out and handle those calls. The ambulances that is charged by the county, the outrageous number you have to pay for an ambulance service is ridiculous. That's to start with. And then, they come up after the first responders are there. They don't come as first responders. So, the ambulance deal is just a shell game, once again. You know, you said this is a great conversation. We are having an excellent conversation, and I'm glad you called it an open discussion, because I just want to point out, and it might sound to constituents out here that this is a personal attack on you, but by no means is it, it's an attack on this council. We looked at, for quite a while, selling our reservoir. We finally got around to being wise enough to realize to keep it. We looked at Cherokee County water and sewer, to sell off our water and sewer lines. We finally realized, they didn't want to take it, ours is a disaster. Every time we turn around, we're looking to sell it off some. Now, we're talking about selling off our fire department. Well, what's keeping us from selling off our police department is, Mr. Bryant referred to, you know, it's become, let's sell off everything. If the costs up, the taxpayers, they're selling. And guess what? Somebody is going to pick up the cost. It's not a free ride. Just get with the program.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, special.
Yes.
This document, folks, and y'all are welcome, it's open, on the last few pages of this document, it's the pages where the commissioner and the mayor, the clerk's, and everybody would sign. This is, this is what is the type of painting, probably won't be the same when we get around to it. This wasn't the agreement between the county and the city. I challenge anybody to find the word ambulance in here. Are we going to sign a statement? Mr. Mayor, you going to sign one that doesn't have ambulance in it?
Yesterday, yesterday, yesterday you told me that you hadn't even read the full thing. You read the summary. You haven't even read the full thing.
I have read that. I didn't tell you I didn't read it. I told you I don't.
I had the summary.
You told you read the summary.
I have read the summary. I sure have.
I have too. I read both. But why would you say, bring the ambulance up when it's not even in here?
That...
It's not in here.
That agreement, Mr. Hubbard, is a framework. That was nothing ever intended for everybody to sign, I don't think. But go ahead.
Is that not signature-based?
You got to start somewhere.
But you bring it up that it's in there. It's not in there, and that's the point we're trying to make. When they bring a document that addresses all these things, then we'll sit down and discuss it, but they haven't brought it addressing all the issues, and they haven't brought one addressing the ambulance station in this name, period.
Well, I'd like to just, excuse me, if you finish, I should be echoed that also, and I just refuse to believe, and Commissioner Chairman Erins is here to, if he disagrees with me, but I just refuse to believe that Cherokee County is going to use ambulance service as a negotiating tool to take over our fire department. It's, the two are not related. They are going to put the ambulances in the best places to serve the entire county. The ambulance service knows no city-county boundaries. It's a county-wide ambulance service. They are stationed at different places. I've seen one parked in, and the operators at their home before. They put them where they're needed. And we have made it clear that our fire stations would be available as a place to house ambulances if that's efficient. They could park them back here behind City Hall if that's a good place. I mean, we have, we, our places are open and available to work with the county, but we've got to stop talking about ambulances as related to the fire department. It just is flat irrelevant to county ambulance service, and that's, that needs to be taken off the table so we can, and can get fair comparisons. Again, the county, right, is not going to use that as a negotiating pawn to take over our fire station. I don't hear disagreement. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? Doc, we need to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Adam E., action on contract fire service funding feasibility study, Council of Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of this whole process seems to be a little bit misunderstood, I guess, in that I felt, as we discussed at the last meeting, that the committee would be looking at consolidation or merger, and then we would be looking at the alternative, because we've tossed numbers around. The CFO's getting blamed for putting out multiple sets of numbers, it seems, but, you know, I think we should look at and get some finite positive numbers on what it's going to cost the city to go and pursue an ISO three rating. The committee should be looking at the merger with the county. And from my point of view, having spent many years in industry, this is no kind of merger I've ever seen before, because typically, the acquired company gets something for being acquired. We, in turn, seem like we're going to be giving away $4 million, then we're going to be charged for using that $4 million, but, or $5 million, it doesn't matter. But my point is that, 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 I think, should be studied in that committee, and I'm recommending that we contract with the, this group that is discussed with Mr. Wood, a feasibility study on how we would fund it and how we would proceed, and it would be an incremental thing, and it was going to cost us $15,000. But at least, if we do this, we have finite and real numbers on how we could fund it, and we've added to the agreement using volunteer firemen, as Mr. Cummings had suggested. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the contract for the fire services study.
Okay, we have a motion. Have a second.
Sir.
Any other discussion? Not? Those are favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Close note? All members going to the motion? I guess, then, does this, does this mean that we need to put on the next agenda a budget amendment? We have for everything else, so I think we have to actually...
This question, $15, less than $20,000, Mr. Wood can sign a document.
This, he can't sign a contract, I don't believe, with the city. Darkness in the amount, as far as the contract goes.
You approve the contract.
I like the mayor's question, indirectly, as where are the dollars coming from? And those dollars can come from our contingency, if that's your...
That's right. And take a budget amendment.
If you would take a budget amendment.
I think it's appropriate, but that's... I think we're asking if they'd like to speak, they ought to do that.
Let's call them both.
Okay, let's call them both. Those in favor of allowing the commissioner to speak to us tonight, raise your, raise your hand. Those in favor. We've got three. Those opposed? Okay. We would welcome Mr. Johnson or Mr. Erins, or Mr. Erins, or anyone. Yeah, both of you might come up, make any comment, and you may have been here long enough, I don't know, there has been, I've been here long enough to hear some of our back and forth and contradictory statements, I guess, both, all of us here, so.
You want to go first?
I appreciate you being here, it's good seeing you.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be... You don't have to, if you don't want to.
No, no, I, I'll be glad to. I wasn't going to volunteer, but having been asked, and I have a Bridge Mill appointment at 7:30. I have followed a lot of this, mostly through the media, but I do watch these meetings down there, and I really think this was an excellent discussion. I took some notes, there's some things that I'd really rather come back specifically and address, not to the audience, and they have to do with some of the costs of the new stations, which is 1.2 for the two, $600,000 each, to operate them. And also, on response times, when you're comparing, give you an example, first responders, if it's a fire truck, go into an EMS call first, they've got paramedics on it. The difference between paramedic and EMTs is huge. We are saving lives every single day because of paramedic training. They're getting them ready for the operating. EMT can't put a needle in it. We're getting people ready, cooled down, ice down, to go to the OR, and so, it's really important to understand the, our measurement of response times on-site, likely involved more than one vehicle, not the first of both of them. And that's, that's a, that's a different issue. What I would like to see, I'm speaking personally, I think we began negotiating tonight, we put a document in front of you, and you've responded responsibly with some very key points. Perfect scenario, sit down and see if we can get through those, and can people be satisfied or not. So, I think, I think this is, I call it a new beginning, if you will, because there's a concrete document that you have discussed, you discussed publicly, and that we would be more than responsible to get together again and go through the points and see where we come out. I mean, each, the points are valid. They're probably going to be, they'll probably benefit significantly by having an actual dialogue, not independent dialogues. We'll understand more, and you'll understand more of what's behind each of those items. And certainly, equity for the individuals is paramount. If there's a differential in how we handle salaries and benefits, they at least need to be the same at the end, what's in your pocket, at the end of the day. And that has to do with vesting, has it? I've already been in touch with the, our pension, I do serve as chairman of the DV Pension for the state that has the $900 million and 95 counties, and... and it's, it's, it's complicated, but I begin the process of just asking how complex it is, and what the answer is. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered based on vesting, based on, on any number of things, but it's, it's certainly doable. I mean, it's, it's not, not a mission impossible, and that's really important. And I think, somebody, somebody asks that would come out of discussion, not necessarily in a document, is that you have two ladder trucks. You don't have ladder companies. You have two ladder companies, basically, overnight. That's pretty important, from a commercial standpoint, pretty important going forward. Cannot quantify to you the value of unified command, where you've got leadership, you know where everybody is, you know where your resources are, you've got your plan, you're training together, and, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to quantify it for you, but certainly it has to do with, with quality of service, training, career opportunities, et cetera. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, just to say, really, an excellent discussion amongst yourselves, and I think it would be prudent for us at whatever time you're comfortable, and with whomever you feel, to, to get together and talk about it. If we've got more than a couple, we have to notice it as an open meeting, but that's okay. We'll get you there.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner, the things that you mentioned about the benefits of the county fire are, are good, you know, the, the company to go along with the ladder truck. Those are very understandable. Our goal here in, with the city kind of matches up the goal that you've been out campaigning for, is economic development. We want a three. Can you, can you, uh, Mr. Commissioner, can y'all put together a contract that'll make us a three and still be in the county? You don't have to answer that now.
Well, let's see what you get back from ISO first.
Well, I, I feel fairly confident what we're gonna get back, but our goal is still a three.
But there's always a, a, a lag time, you, you know...
I understand.
You gotta have the facility and have its values and have a use.
I understand, but my question is, can you do it? I didn't ask you the time, but can we get it done? That's, and that goes along with your economic development that you're so hard out meeting the drums for.
I would certainly say that would be an objective. I can't, I can't guarantee that, that you get it, and I can't give you a, a compensation factor if you don't. I mean, it would certainly be in everybody's...
That's what we'd be looking for.
Yeah. And I don't know how you, you, you put a contract together that says that.
I don't either, but that's, y'all, y'all are acquiring, you're writing the contracts. Y'all figure it out. You're smart.
It's really, it's really an intent as opposed to a promise.
I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta go. Your service will be... Thank you all.
If I may just make three points plus chime in about the three. My perception, not being a fire professional, is that we're both, city and county, about equally far from a three. The county, we believe, is on the verge of moving from a five to a four. That's been our objective for several years. We think we're closing in on that. We think when the fire training center opens this year, that puts us over the top. That remains to be proven, but that's our belief. From there, I think we both have a, a, a large step to make to get to a three. We will, when we get to the four, begin working toward how we would get to the three. We have not really addressed that so far. The three things I was gonna mention, other than that, are, are number one, the county's not trying to push this on you guys, nor are we in a position to do that. I mean, we are simply making an, an offer that we think is in the best interest of both city and county citizens, but that's your choice, not ours, and, and we don't have any fantasy that, that it's our choice. And so we don't meddle in your business to the extent, except to the extent you've, you've expressed some interest in it. The ambulance service, I, I substantially agree with Councilman Brian, that is a countywide service that is blind to city limits and barriers. We, we do not currently put ambulances in the city fire stations, really as a matter of convenience. We can serve the city from surrounding stations, county stations, just as well. But they are, the, the operators, it's not just where you park the ambulance, it's where, where the guys sit when they're waiting on a call. Now, they don't sit as much as the firefighters, they're on the go a bit more. But I think it's just more, I don't know what the word is, they're more at home or whatever to be in a station where they are under their own chain of command and so forth. If we have a unified command, then that small barrier goes away. Not that we couldn't, if it were needed, place an ambulance service in one of the city stations. The only reason we really mention that is at one point, we got a request from someone at the city to say, well, can you commit to put ambulances in, in the city? We said, sure, we can do that. But if you don't wanna see, we won't, and, and I agree that it's, it's not a, a big issue. We almost certainly would want to put one at a Laurel Canyon Station if we were to close our North Canton Station and consolidate into Laurel Canyon, because that's a, that's the place we keep one now, and we, it's needed there. If we don't consolidate, you know, I'm not sure what we'll do. We'll probably keep one at North Canton. That's always been the plan. I think I had one other point, but I forgot what it was. Anything else I could respond to? Yes, sir?
Harry, just a little good-natured ribbon here. You've been quoted a couple of times as saying something to the effect of, some members of the council seem to have a kind of a civic pride, emotional attachment to the fire trucks that say City of Canton on them. Um, I kind of wish you quit saying that, because it's just not true. We, we want what's best for the, the city. Now, if there's anybody up here that disagrees with that, that you guys are doing this just 'cause you like seeing City of Canton road on the side of the trucks, please, uh, tell me now, but, but let's, let's maybe try to...
Well, I say that maybe for two reasons. One is, I probably would feel the same way, if, I would feel that way if I were in your shoes. The other is that I distinctly remember, Bill, you and I talking, I was sitting on the beach down at front of the Indian Beach, talking to you on the cellphone, and that very subject came up, and you agreed with me that that was an important consideration. So really, that's where I got the notion, was from you and that conversation. But anyway.
I'm a spoke, you're a very, but it's, it's nice to, yes, I'm, I'm proud of my city, and I like seeing it written down, like gold leaf and that kind of stuff, but it does not affect my decision on life safety issues for the taxpayers of this city. So there is a difference, and I think you would, would probably be the same way with your county, so...
Sure.
Yeah. After you're right, I'm proud of my city, but not to the extent where I'm gonna put people's lives in jeopardy just 'cause we got a nice little sign. Now, could, could we ask the fire chief to come up as well?
One second, if I could ask, Commissioner Constance, you've got a nine-five here in the county we're for, so you've got two different billing rates, I guess, that go out to the people who are rated nines and people who are rated fives, or are they all...
Everybody pays the same. The, the nine and the five is really a matter of water service.
Okay, that's...
Where we have pipeline water service and fire hydrants, it's a five. Where we don't, it's a nine. Everywhere, of course, in the city has pipeline water, so that would not be an issue in the city.
My, my, my question is this, is that if we should go through, a lot of ifs, can we still have the City of Canton recognized as a four, so you'd have a four, five, and a nine?
Well, as I say, I, I think we'll be, before we would actually, I think we would be at a, at a nine and a four, and the four would certainly apply to the city.
But what I'm saying is, I don't wanna get into a contract if I'm going to a five.
And I would feel the same way if I were you, honestly.
And so if we established a separate code for the City of Canton, but we, we serve it by the county, that the ISO would still recognize that geographical area as a four, and if this county becomes a four, great.
I don't know the answer to that, honestly, but I'm not a fire professional, but I will say that it's always been my belief that any, any decision to go forward would really be contingent upon the county getting to the level four, because otherwise, uh, there is at least a sense, and to some degree, the reality, of taking a step back, and, and I would, I would understand the resistance to do that. So I, I think by the time we were, pulled this together, if we decided we even wanted to go forward, we'll get to the four, but if we didn't, I would understand postponing or, or canceling the attempt to go forward.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know if that's possible. I'm not...
Well, you got a nine-five already. Well, that's because, I'm in full, Mr. Hubbard, and I don't say this without due to authority, but I have asked that question of our fire professionals, that specific question, and by that ISO will, will not give you a triple split, they'll give you a double split, but not a triple split. And that's, that's, I say that with not absolute certainty, but based on what I've been told.
But, and as I say, just don't forget, the, the nine is, is for areas that don't have fire hydrants and water service, and county commission does not even control that. That's under a separate authority, and I understand it's expensive to run water lines everywhere in the county. I remember my third point, if I can make it, I'll make it as briefly as I can. And that's the issue of a merger, and whether, whether one's buying out the other or, or not. And I would say that the, the spirit in which I view this is that it would be what I would call a merger, in which both parties contribute their assets to the merged entity and go forward together. From a more practical standpoint, you know, the, the residents of unincorporated Cherokee, along with the three cities that have been served as long as the county has had paid fire service, you know, have, have built up and paid for the equipment and stations to serve their fire needs. We really can't ask those citizens to now again pay to serve Canton residents. So we really have to, we, we would have to ask you to contribute to lease of the assets. There was some talk, in, in the past time, we talked about this many years ago now, almost ten years ago, about buying the assets, and that really killed the deal, because we, we just really can't ask unincorporated residents to pay to buy the assets that we serve the city in Canton.
But you can ask us to give it away. You can ask, you're asking our citizens of Canton to give away. So it's just the reverse.
We would just ask them to contribute their fire assets into a merge that we serve them.
Contribute, give, whatever work you want to use. But Harry, that's, you know, you've got a good point, but our point is also, we're giving away hard-earned taxpayers' cash. We're giving it away, and there's no guarantee we get it back. You need to address that in the contract.
The assets would be used to serve Canton, of course.
You need to address that. If you decided to cancel us in two years, where are those assets going?
We do need to try to figure out a resolution. It'll be sticky, because nobody really envisions that going into such a deal as it is.
Well, we don't.
But we probably need to get a more...
We pay for it.
You know, I, I'm sorry, Bill, you have to come in.
Yes, Senator, but to clarify, you just said those assets would be used to protect Canton. Does that mean none of our current fire trucks would be stationed outside the city?
Not necessarily. What I'm saying is that the, the equivalent, in fact, you know, eventually those resources wear out and have to be replaced and so forth, but, but the equivalent amount of fire assets would be used, whether, whether we moved, I don't know what the, the fire professionals would want to do in terms of staging this equipment. Some probably would. You, you have what amounts to a spare ladder truck now, that probably would not be staged in Canton, realistically. It would probably be staged somewhere else in Cherokee County. But let me just say it this way, the, the fire assets, the, the substance of the fire assets that serve a Canton, Canton would continue to be available to serve Canton, for the most part, based in Canton. I can't guarantee there wouldn't be any of it outside.
Harry, it, it seems to me that, we talked about this big value of assets that we got. To me, the value of those assets is in the service they provide, not in true dollar value that we could sell them and get all this money back, but in the service that they provide. And if they were transferred or merged with the Canton, they're still gonna be providing that service into us. So that, that to me is, I don't know if that's how you see it or not, but I see it as, as the equipment and, and, and facilities as providing a service to us. More...
Yes, can we, if Commissioner Spadu, can we ask the fire chief some questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I object to that, and the reason I do is that I think we're putting, we put the fire chief in the middle of a political problem, and I don't think he should be there. If we have questions, I think we should ask him in private and, and not get him emburled in a political situation. I think it's just, I mean, I, we, we like to hear somebody ask, but I don't think we should make it publicly, and I think it would be difficult for him.
I promise my questions are strictly technical, fire-related questions, and I've only got about two or three, but I just want to clear up, in my own mind, some of these differences that the chairman spoke of, as far as what are the fire department's schedule. Well, I'm talking strictly fire protection technical question, nothing to do with cost and those kind of things.
Could, could you address your question to Mr. Wood directly? He may know the answer anyway.
Sure. The, um, uh, I'm sorry, I, I would like to know how our EMTs, our emergency train, our medical trained personnel, this, this difference in being able to provide, um, treatment that involves piercing the skin with a needle versus not piercing the skin with a needle. I'd, I'd like to know what we have capable there, how, how prepared we are, what that means. That's my first question.
Can we, can we send a paramedic on every truck? If you keep, you keep saying, do we send a paramedic on every truck?
No, sir. We have three paramedics out of our fire department, out of the twenty-one firefighters on shift. We have three paramedics, and the rest are EMT within exception of three. An EMT can start an IV. We can start an IV, an EMT can do an EZIO, which is actually drilling a hole in the decap in the bone to get the, the solutions into the bone marrow, et cetera. So yes, an, an EMT can pierce the skin.
That answer your question?
Yes.
Um, this'll, now, this one may be, uh, not a good one to ask, and if it's not, I will withdraw it, but it was stated earlier that the belief is that, um, the county is about equally as far from a three as the city. I would like a professional opinion as to, um, how, and I know it has to be general, but how far away are we from a three, and what would we have to do to obtain a three versus a part of the county?
I have been led to believe that three new fire stations and an adequate access to a training facility would probably move us within range if not give us a three. That's three new stations and training facilities.
So would you stick with the plan we're on originally? We will most likely become a three.
Chief, can I get a head nod, yes or no? We, let me say this, we could have Mr., we could have our consultant address that question specifically. We'll have that, we'll have that done in writing.
Mostly, I just wanted to clarify that with our current department, we are plenty capable medically of providing for the needs of our people in the City of Canton.
Correct. I've not been, we've been made aware of any specific problems in terms of medical provision. But it's still, it's not as high-level a service as, as with a paramedic on board every time. So it's not having a doctor and a physician's assistant, maybe I don't mean that in a great negative way, but it's like having two different levels, both of them can do an awful lot, but you have, you have different levels there. All right. Harry, thank you for your comments, Senator. Okay. Item nine-eight, under, under new business, action... Oh, did I miss that? First reading of, I don't have here, first reading of the General, General Addendum to the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System Defined Benefit Retirement Plan Adoption Agreement, City Manager. I think we talked about that in the last two meet, two meetings. Is there any questions or comments that need to be made about that? Okay? If not, we will...
Be clear that that's also adopting as part of the agreement the cessation of the council members' benefits that you approved in December. It's just now getting into a written document.
Okay. And this is the first reading, so we'll vote on that. All right. Now, the action approval surplus on option items, I think that's been in your agenda package, so you have seen what those are. Do I have a motion to approve that? Have a motion, have a second. Any other discussion or questions? Not as a favor, six to five, saying aye. Those no? All members voting for the motion. Mr. Wood, do you have a report other than the motion? Okay. All right, well, I have nothing either, so I'll enter, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, what you got?
One thing I'd like to answer...
One thing I'd like to ask, because I'm a member of the committee, because Mr. Constance and myself are one, and I don't, and Mr. Brian Boynton, I'm not for sure you're still on the...
I was on today, yeah.
So should we, help, focus, do that?
I will. I'll either serve or in that capacity, or I'll call someone that asks me, or the, the...
I was going to ask about Mr. Huff, because he's always has some passion for farms.
I love fire. He has the passion, passion.
I think we should try to set up a meeting this Sunday week, um, maybe about three weeks.
The second thing I'd like to do is that, the theater manager told me today, the theater manager told me today, mentioned that we are having a free movie Saturday, 10 o'clock and 2:30. It's a child, a children's movie, but it's an adult movie too. It's David Crockett, and it's, it's a classic 1955 movie. It's absolutely free, timed for 10 o'clock and 2:30. And he asked if I would, now.
No, you said it's an adult movie, so be, be careful. Don't write stuff down.
Well, it's supposed to be for most...
Okay, I'm going to adjourn.